We like to call the regular city council meeting to order at 6:02 PM. Madam Clerk, can you please call the roll?
Neverett.
Here.
Wilson.
Here.
Tillman.
Here.
Williams.
Here.
Gardner.
Here.
Patton.
Here.
Smith.
Here. Will everyone please rise for the pledge of allegiance?
(inaudible). This time we'd like to call up Pastor Cortland Stokes to offer a word of prayer.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Council. Of course, Mayor and City Council, we want to show you our appreciation for allowing us to be a part of the National Day of Prayer on last week. I think it was a successful event. Thank you, Mayor, again. I have tonight with me Pastor Flucker, Andre Flucker Jr. He was slated to be on our program, but of course his schedule didn't allow, so I would like to yield my prayer time to him tonight, and I want us to welcome Pastor Flucker tonight.
Mayor, City Council, let us pray. Eternal God, our Father, we thank you for this privileged opportunity you've afforded us to come together, to galvanize the minds, to do exactly what you've called and commissioned us to do. Now, as your Word declares, wisdom is the principal thing, therefore get wisdom. But in all thy getting, get understanding. Bless us, we pray, that all things that we speak bring glory to your name. Thank God. Amen.
And Pastor Flucker, you have a special day coming up on June 10th. Do you want to invite the Council or make the announcement?
Yes, sir. To all of the Council, to our Mayor, to all of you, I'd like to invite you to the ribbon cutting ceremony at 9:45 AM. I'm requesting the Mayor and all of you that can be there. It'll be at 9:45 AM on June the 10th, 520 Sibley Boulevard. That's on the corner of Sibley and Harrison. All Nations Church of Chicago, June the 10th, 9:45 AM, will be doing a ribbon cutting ceremony and a dedication service Saturday morning. I would love for you to be my guest, as we endeavor to be the best we can be to enhance the vision of our great Mayor. God bless.
Thank you. At this time, item four on the agenda is public comment. Is there anyone who would like to have public comments? Please step to the mic.
Yeah, I'd like to make a public comment about having to have an email to make a public comment. I saw that posted on there the other day. I don't think that's a good thing to have. I mean, do you have to post a e- uh, do we have to email to pay the water bill? Do we have to email to vote? I mean, the idea is you should want to have as many people from the public as possible to comment about the issues in Calumet City, not to make, to have a hurdle to make people have to jump over. So I would like to, I would like to have that restriction removed, or, you know, whoever, you know, came up with that idea, you know, is not fit for public service and should resign immediately. Thank you very much.
I don't think we're aware of that, but there's no need to be that harsh about it. I think the attorneys are going to look into it.
Thank you, it's posted.
Okay, that's, every city and village does the same thing, but your, your comment, we did receive your email, and we will look into it to get your answer.
Thank you very much.
Is there anyone else who would like to comment?
Hello, everyone.
Hello.
May I ask somewhat of a question? I want to know, are there going to be any summer jobs this year in Calumet City?
Currently, there is a summer employment application on our city website. The program is going to start June 5th. You can apply online, or we can get you an application tonight. It is for our youth. We received a $500,000 grant from the state of Illinois, so we can hire more youth this year. But we do have a summer program, June 5th through September 2nd is the program dates.
And what type of jobs will those be?
Public works, interned at the library. We have a whole list of positions. Once we get them in, we'll interview the youth and ask them where they want to go, and then have them come and work in one of the departments in Calumet City to work.
The reason why I ask is because when you get off the Bishop Ford, Sibley East or Sibley West, it's enough, it's enough garbage over there. It looks horrible. It really does. And that should be something, maybe you should keep, you know, maybe come up with a summer program as far as cleaning that up?
Well, we have our public works crew, and we are working on IDOT on our city side, so there's two sides of that expressway. Now, maybe the Dalton side is horrible, and we can attribute that to Dalton and what they do, but we have instructed our public works to clean the Calumet City side, and IDOT is coming out. They come out three times a year. We're trying to get them to increase it, but our public works crew goes out there every day to clean the Calumet City side. So, just to explain how we do it on our Calumet City side.
Okay. Not to take up anyone a lot of time, but this is my first time here, because I normally don't get off in enough time to come, so I'm going to try to get mine in where I can fit in.
You got one minute left.
Okay. What's the procedure as far as getting a permit? I wanted to do a yard sale, not so much a yard sale, on 158th and Burnham. There's this big, I don't know, I guess you all would call it a park. And I tried and tried and tried, I'm going to leave it at that try, to get a permit. Was told they would look into it. When December came, I guess I said I wasn't getting one then. What's the, what's the procedure for that?
If you give your information to Jewel, who was sitting up front, we'll make sure Director Tillman calls you back, if not tomorrow, later next week.
All right. And one more. That same park, right, right at the end of the park, we have homeless people living there. Did someone tell them, you know, that was okay for them to live there? It's about eight of them.
I believe at one time we had an issue that we addressed with the county, so some of that property on 159th Street, I think, if that's the same property you're talking about, is Cook County Forest Reserve, and Cook County Forest Reserve dealt with that issue.
I mean, it's just a little piece of grass on 159th and Burnham. That's Cook County?
Yes, it is. It's Forest Reserve. So we, we are working with the Forest Reserve. We were made aware of that issue last year by Alderman Gardner and several other Aldermen, and we alerted the county, and it came right out. So we'll, we'll contact them if that's still happening.
Thank you all for your ears.
You're welcome. Is there anyone else who would like to address during public comment? If not, item five on the agenda, we should move on. Item five on the agenda, approval of minutes. The minutes were submitted to the Clerk, to the Council, as presented. Did anyone have any questions or changes to the minutes? If not, can someone make a motion to approve the minutes as so stated on the agenda?
So moved.
Motion made by Alderwoman Wilson, second by Alderman Gardner. Madam Clerk, can you please call the roll?
Neverett.
Yes.
Wilson.
Yes.
Tillman.
Yes.
Williams.
Yes.
Gardner.
Yes.
Patton.
Yes.
Smith.
Thank you. The minutes are approved. Item six on the agenda are reports of standing committees. Finance, Alderman Gardner.
No report tonight, Mayor, but I would just like to make a special shout out to the grants team, Economic Development, and Congresswoman Robin Kelly for the grant that the Fire Department received this past week, in the sum of $1.8 million. I think it's very much needed and much appreciated.
Thank you, Alderman.
Thank you.
Public Safety, Alderman Williams.
No report, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you. Public Utilities, Alderman Patton.
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to read something real briefly that I received, that my office received from ComEd last week. ComEd is empowering the next generation of STEM leaders. ComEd is excited to announce the return of its signature Science, Technology, Engineering, and Math, or STEM, program for future women's history makers, the ComEd EV Rally. Young women can now apply to participate in the annual competition that challenges teen girls to build and race high-tech, electric-powered go-karts. Participants will work and learn from ComEd mentors, connect with peers from other communities, and put their STEM knowledge to the test while building an electronic vehicle. Every participant receives a $2,000 scholarship upon completion of the program. The application is now open until June 1st to any female Illinois resident between the ages of 13 and 18. And you can apply for this at comedevrally.com. That's comedevrally.com. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Alderman. Ordinances and Resolutions, Alderman Tillman.
Thank you, Mayor. No official report, but I do want to thank the city attorneys for working with myself to draft the ordinances that was recommended at the last month's Ordinance of Resolutions Committee meeting. We do, I do ask that the Alderman support items C3, C4, and C5 on the agenda today, and that's all I have. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Alderman. Health, Education, and Welfare, Alderwoman Wilson.
No official report, but I would like to say Happy Teachers Appreciation Week and Happy Nurses Week, and our very own Miss Nurse Viola, can you stand up? Calumet City's own super nurse. Thank you so much for everything you do with our babies especially. I appreciate you and all of the nurses and educators. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderwoman. Permits and licensees, Alderman Smith.
No report this time, Mayor.
Thank you. Public Works, Alderman Neverett.
Thank you, Mayor. There was a committee, the whole meeting, held April 20th, 2023, in which there were items related to public works discussed. I just want to thank, again, our Deputy, our Commissioner Jericho Thomas, and Deputy Commissioner Bobby Frederickson for that great presentation. Some of the items we spoke about were bulk item pickup. Again, a reminder, one item per week, per resident, is allowed for bulk item pickup. If you could coordinate with Public Works and Republic, that'd be great, and Preferred. But again, one bulk item per week, per resident. Please avoid fines if there's, if there's more garbage there than that, bulk items. We spoke about temporary traffic safety bumps. Installation is underway, utilizing the 2022 list. We know, as residents see those going down, they're making phone calls and requesting more. Again, Public Works will do the best we can to address that list. Tree trimming was spoken. Great news, and a great milestone was reached. We had a backlog of tree trimming and tree requests. I can't remember how long that backlog was, but happy to announce that that backlog is now caught up. We did hire an outside vendor to help with that, so we will try now, moving forward, to keep, keep up with our tree trimming requests. Street sweeping, in the past two years, we had an outside vendor. We are recommending that we move to an in-house. There has been a proposal. I don't see it on this agenda, Mayor, or Jericho, but I think we'll be talking about a street sweeper that we will purchase here soon, which is great news, so we'll have two, possibly three, in rotation now, outside of the one that we have. Alley grading, this was the hot topic. We know that's the number one concern for most residents in Calumet City. We do have a backlog of alley grading requests. Just to put in perspective, we get about 10 requests plus a week, according to our Public Works Department, and we're able to maybe do two a day currently with the equipment, so it's been proposed to purchase more equipment, and the goal will be to do, the goal is to do five to 10 alleys per day with the, the new equipment that we'll be looking to order with that street sweeper. Grass cutting, we do have a vendor locked in for two years. The vendor is currently under contract through 2024 to provide services on our city-owned lots. Continue to please report any overgrowth for properties that are on your street, and we will try our best to keep, keep up with our vacant houses and get those addressed as well. And we, lastly, we spoke about fleet and equipment needs. Again, that goes along with the street sweeper and some of the alley grading equipment that we spoke of, and more to come on that equipment on future upcoming agendas. That's all, Mayor. Thank you.
Under City Council reports, let's start on the seventh ward, Alderman Smith.
Just want to remind the residents, continue to report any issues with vacant properties so that I can engage Public Works as well as Calumet City Police Department to address them. Thank you for your feedback. It allows me, as an Alderman, actually to, you know, help improve safety and also help improve the curbside of the area.
Thank you.
So I want to thank you for that.
Thank you, Alderman. Sixth ward, Alderman Patton.
Thank you, Mayor. Just quickly, want to thank our city departments, especially Inspection Services, Public Works, our city engineers, who have been really quick to respond to a handful of citizen requests and complaints in the last few weeks. I think, you know, some of these requests are being handled at a pace that we've never seen before and we weren't used to before. So, you know, especially Jericho, you and your guys at Public Works, thank you so much for getting on that stuff and taking care of it as quick as it comes in. And for everybody else, if you need anything, 708-891-8196. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman. Fifth ward, Alderman Gardner.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, City Council. Good evening, City residents. I would like to just remind you to continue to call my office, 708-891-8195, with concerns. Also, continue to report vacant houses, overgrown vegetation. And last but not least, I would like to thank Public Works for their speedy efforts to put down speed bumps on some of the streets that were requested. And finally, I would like to invite residents to contact my office, reference to a job fair at Bally Casino in Chicago for their grand opening. If you have any concerns or interested in any employment, contact my office, 708-895-8195. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Alderman. Fourth ward, Alderman Williams.
Thank you, Mayor. First and honest God makes all things possible. Want to remind the residents about the Mother's Day, pre-annual Mother's Day event tomorrow taking place at Burnham Day Manor, 1700 Memorial Drive, 5 o'clock to 7 PM. If you would like to attend, I will entertain a couple of more RSVPs. You can call the office today at 708-212-2240 or 708-891-8194. That's it, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman. Third ward, Alderman Tillman.
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to thank the residents that came out to the last town hall meeting. If any resident was unable to make the meeting but want the meeting notes and the agenda, please email me at dtillman@calumetcity.org. The next meeting is the first Monday of June. I hope to see everybody there. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman. Second ward, Alderwoman Wilson.
Thank you. Thank you to Public Works for your assistance with the speed bumps and everything around the second ward and throughout the city. I am officially adding to your alley grading list this evening. We have a long list. I am happy to hear that you're caught up with the tree trimming, because I will be adding to that list as well. Second ward, if you need tree trimming, please send us your tree trimming request. Text 708-586-4990. That's 708-586-4990, and one of the interns will respond to you. Right now, we have intern Lauren or Caleb. He is still with us. Should you have any questions, please feel free to call me, 708-586-4990. Please leave a message, or I don't know that you called. Or you can call me at City Hall, 708-891-8192. I am asking that if you live next to a home that is vacant, please let me know when the grass becomes too high, or when there are things that need to be kept up on that property, so we can make the owners aware, as well as our Public Works to assist. Thank you. That is all.
Thank you, Alderwoman. Alderman, first ward, Alderman Neverett.
Thank you, Mayor. Just to add to the Public Works comment, I do see item, thank you, Mayor, for that, pointing that out. Item Financial Matters, item 22, is the street sweeper. I'll ask the Council support, to support that, purchase of that equipment. First ward report, I just want to thank you, send a thank you out to Mike and Solario and the Honors Government Classes at TF North High School for the invitation to speak today. That was great conversation, all the way to the bell of each of those three classes. It was great to talk about the exciting things happening in Calumet City and kind of educate the students on the different types of government, whether that be Cook County responsibility, or state responsibility, or our responsibility, and kind of get those clarifications out there. But I think it was great to talk to the, to the students and get those clarifications out there. So, again, thank you so much to Mike and Solario and the classes. I did promise those classes, we had a lot of discussion and excitement around the Burnham Plan. A lot of the recommendations that came, that they came up with was already in the Burnham Plan, so we were able to reference those as they came up. Very bright students there. So, I will be working with our, with the Mayor and our city engineers and our grant writing department to get an update on those grants. We did get awarded $800,000 for rebuilding downtowns, so Burnham Avenue was the recipient of that $800,000 for branding. Farnsworth Group, our city engineers did a great job putting together, along with the Burnham Plan exhibit, some great wayfinding signage, monuments, and some streetscape designs. So, look forward to finding out what the next steps are for that, and also any future potential grants that Burnham Avenue may have, so we could execute these recommendations. One last thing, too, just to piggyback off Alderwoman Wilson and the tree trimming. Just, I know this came up, this comes up a few times, where folks are asking for tree trimmings. The city will trim trees in the parkways in between the sidewalk and, and your curb. So if it's on your property, anywhere from the sidewalk to your property, that's your responsibility. We don't, we don't trim those trees in your yard or in your front yard. So again, it'll be from the sidewalk to the parkway, or any vacant lots in town. Please, you know, report those tree trimmings. That's all this evening, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman. At this time, I'd like to call up Director Bansky to give a report on ProChamps that's on the agenda, and then we'll go to our city engineer for update on our lead service line and that report. Director Bansky.
Mr. Mayor, Alderman, Alderwoman, thank you for having me tonight. On the agenda this evening is a one-year contract extension for ProChamps. ProChamps is our property registration company that we have contracted for the past two years, so it is up for renewal slash expiration this June. So this is going to essentially extend our same services with them for one additional year. We can obviously keep redoing this until we no longer want them, or find some other way of handling it. Essentially, ProChamps has been handling things pretty well. In my new six months of working with them, things have gotten better with our communications with them, so we understand what we need from them and what work we expect from them. Adding to our manpower and Crime Free Housing Department has allowed us to track down a lot of the properties that have been kind of sitting in limbo on their software platform. So, tonight, you have a chance to review that contract. All the same terms and conditions are set to continue for the next year.
Thank you, Director. Any questions for Director Bansky?
Mayor.
Alderman Neverett.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Mike Bansky. The ProChamp system, now, once they catalog our vacant properties and that catalog of properties is in their software, what is the next step? Is the ball in our court at that point, to do something, or is, at what point, or what services are they responsible?
Well, they are, I'm sorry to overstep you. They're providing us with some of the information on vacant properties from resources that they have at their disposal, most of which is the United States Postal System. Whatever vacant properties they identify, we do have to still put boots on the ground, and I have an inspector that, his day is just nothing but driving around and trying to verify if there's any signs of occupancy at those properties, which, we also created an information sticker that he is putting on the front doors to these properties that is easy noticeable for people to contact my department office, in case we are essentially tagging a property as vacant when it may not be vacant. It just may not be looking very pleasant. So nonetheless, those stickers have already been quite successful. We've had several phone calls, lots of those, from people that are saying, hey, this property isn't really vacant, we're working on it or something. But yeah, it still requires us to be visiting those properties and confirming them.
Thank you. I appreciate that.
One, one other comment, if I may. All, several of the Aldermen made comments about telling their constituents about reporting vacant properties to you. If I may, also suggest that they report those to Crime Free Housing Department, or to Building and Zoning Department, so that we can certainly take care of following up with the proper owners of those properties. We don't want them to remain looking that way, because they obviously are going to be a blight to our community. So many efforts, as I've heard, Public Works is working hard, and I'm sure all of you Aldermen are working hard in your wards, to make Calumet City look as great as can be. Definitely want to make sure we get these vacant properties on board with that, too.
Do you mind providing the residents with a number that they can call?
Sure. Crime Free Housing Department is still located within the Police Department Building, so you can reach us by calling the non-emergency Police Department number at 708-868-2500. Simply ask for anybody in Crime Free Housing Department, and we can certainly take care of that. Also, then, Building and Zoning Department, I believe they are, 708-891-8120, I believe.
Yes.
So, certainly reach out to either one of our departments. We work closely together, even though geographically we're not.
Thank you, Director Bansky. Appreciate the report. Next, our city engineer, Matt Berger.
Thank you, Mayor. Quick update on the lead service line project. As you are aware, Calumet City does have lead service lines for residential services that go to their houses, and we're trying to address that as, that is a state and government, federal mandate, too, to try and remove those. The city was put in for a $4 million state revolving fund, which is a low-interest loan. Happy to report that $4 million, that $4 million has been fully 100% forgiven to the city by the state. So, congratulations on that. The projects, we've done over 25 site surveys. What we have to do is we got to go and we have to meet with the residents, survey their property, figure out where we got to make the connections. We've done over 25 of those in the last week, and construction will begin on Wednesday, to dig the first and replace the first lines in this program. So, if there's any questions, more than happy to answer them.
Any questions for our city engineer?
Yeah, Matt, I had heard from a representative of the vendor doing that, that we're getting a rather high number of residents that were refusing to participate in the program. Do you have any idea what those numbers are like, and if we're doing anything to try and communicate with those residents, to explain the full depth of the program?
Yeah, so what we are actually doing is going door-to-door. We've changed, kind of modified our approach, just when we got a few refusals back initially, to go back and explain to them what it takes. In some cases, too, we've even found that sometimes people have checked the box of no, because they just didn't understand. So we actually have, our foreman onsite is bilingual, so he has spoken, even with a couple of residents who only speak Spanish, to properly communicate. In some cases, too, it was just the tenants, and then it's, it's, we got to reach out to landlords. So there's been a little bit of digging. We've been working very closely with Public Works and the Water Department, and trying to be proactive in that, to try and get more people to understand what the program is, even to the point of send down and, and just taking the 20 minutes, 30 minutes to explain to them the benefits of why they should enroll in the program.
I think we told the engineers to, don't send a letter with engineer in speaking. Send it, send it to the residents and tell them the benefits of the programs, because the engineer speaking was so long. But I'm glad you guys changed the approach and did the door-to-door.
Yeah, yeah. We recognize that something like this needs a personal touch, so, and that's the way that Calumet City operates, so that's how we're operating on it, too.
Thank you, Matt. I appreciate the-
One last question.
Sorry.
Have we identified which wards we're starting in?
So we started, and we have six and seven is where the first program is. We So we started in, we have, six and seven is where the first program is. We have a, about 15, or about 10% of the houses are in Ward Seven. That's actually the first area that we've started, just to knock out those, those streets. But we have actually started doing surveys in the Sixth Ward as well, too, so.
And that's the entire first phase?
That's the entire first phase of this project, yes.
All right. Thank you. Item eight on the agenda is informational items to be accepted and placed on file. Does anybody have any questions about the items that appear in item eight? If not, can someone make a motion to accept items eight A and B and place on file?
So moved.
Second.
Motion made by Alderman Tillman, second by Alderman Wilson. Motion made by Alderman Williams, and second by Alderman Wilson. I'm sorry. All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone oppose? Motion carries for item eight A and B. Item nine are new business items. I'd like to amend item two. It should say motion to approve the ProChamps for one year to June 23, 2024. There's a terminate, so it's, motion should say to amend it, extend the contract with ProChamps for one year to June 23, 2024.
Excuse me. Item number seven is for the Sixth and Seventh.
Yes. Well, item seven is for the Fourth Ward, Alderman.
Oh, but are we calling, are we identifying that as Forsyth Village as well?
Yes.
Okay.
So just for the benefit of the public, tonight, we are taking the first step, looking at planning for our city with potential new houses, also potential community center and new Public Works. I like the song, I just didn't. But also a potential new Public Works facility, which will set us on course to have a community center, new Public Works building, potentially in the Third Ward, Fourth Ward, and boundaries of the Second Ward. That's on the agenda tonight for new business, but we're excited about these projects, and hopefully we'll have more announcements, groundbreakings in the next six months for these items on the agenda under nine A, one through 12.
So moved.
Motion made to approve items nine A, one through 12. Motion made by Alderman Gardner, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Alderman Wilson.
So.
I'm sorry, Alderman.
I'm sorry, I had a question, if I could.
Yes.
So I'm sorry, going back to Alderman Gardner's question, number seven is the Fourth Ward, which is on the other side, which doesn't connect to the Fifth Ward or Forsyth Village. Is it just called, it's probably not called Forsyth Village, so.
Yeah, that's a typo, Alderman. It should just say the Fourth Ward, excluding, as amended, it should say the Fourth Ward and exclude Forsyth Village.
Right.
So as amended, we have a roll call vote. Alderman Gardner made a motion. Alderman Wilson seconded a motion for the amendment. We're in the roll call stage. Madam Clerk, can you please call a roll?
Navarrete?
Yes.
Wilson?
Yes.
Tillman?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Gardner?
Yes.
Patton?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Let's congratulate tonight for the reappointment, Deputy Clerk Quentin Daley, and also Deputy Clerk Jessica Coffey, and Mr. Treasurer, the Deputy Treasurer Nicole Rutter, reappointment as well. Thank you, everyone. We're in item B under building permits. Does anyone have any questions about the building permits that are presented before you tonight under new fence construction? Would you like to take them all together, new fence construction and new garage construction?
Yes.
Is there a motion to approve the new fence construction and new garage construction as it appears on the agenda?
So moved.
Motion made by Alderman Wilson, second by Alderman Gardner. Madam Clerk, can you please call a roll?
Navarrete?
Yes.
Wilson?
Yes.
Tillman?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Gardner?
Yes.
Patton?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Item C are resolutions and ordinances, as they appear, items C one through eight. Alderman Tillman, do you want to make a statement before, I think you have? Does anybody have any questions as these ordinances and resolutions appear on the agenda?
No, no questions, no statement. I'd like to make a motion to approve items C one through C eight, as presented.
Second.
Motion made by Alderman Tillman to approve the items, second by Alderman Wilson. Madam Clerk, can you please call a roll?
Navarrete?
Yes.
Wilson?
Yes.
Tillman?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Gardner?
Yes.
Patton?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Item D are financial matters, one through 27. Alderman Gardner, are there any questions regarding items one, D one through 27?
None.
Not Alderman Gardner?
I'd like to make a motion to approve items D under financial matters one through 27.
Motion made by Alderman Gardner, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Alderman Williams to approve financial matters D one through 27. Madam Clerk, can you please call a roll?
Navarrete?
Yes.
Wilson?
Yes.
Tillman?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Gardner?
Yes.
Patton?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Unfinished business, Alderman Navarrete, we'll start on your side.
Nothing this evening, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman. Alderman Wilson, unfinished business?
Thank you. Coming up, we have Mother's Day, so Happy Mother's Day. Prayers and blessings to those who are mourning the loss of their mother. Mothers are the people who make ordinary children like you, and I believe we can do the impossible. I am asking for prayers for my family, the Thompson family, the Williams family, and the Barnes family, and the passing of our sister, mother, grandmother, and my Aunt Shirley. This Mother's Day will be difficult. And that's all.
If we can all take a moment of silence for the Alderman's aunt, I'd appreciate it. Thank you. Alderman, our prayers are with you. Alderman Tillman, unfinished business?
Just to kind of piggyback, I do want to say Happy Mother's Day to all the mothers in Calumet City and beyond, and since I, we will not be with you all until two weeks, I also want to say Happy Birthday to Director Tillman. I don't, she's not in the crowd today, but it's also her birthday next week, so that's all. Thank you.
Gladys Knight.
Concert.
Gladys, is it Gladys?
[laughing]
Gladys Knight concert.
[laughing]
Happy birthday, Director Tillman. She's already given her birthday wish list, so we'll make sure we celebrate all of May birthdays, including Director Tillman's. Alderman Williams, unfinished business?
Thank you, Mayor. Real quickly, Happy Mother's Day to all the mothers. My condolences, Alderman Wilson. Also, Juneteenth, the date is June 17. The event is at the Calumet City Library, as if, as we do for National Night Out, so we'll block off the area, and we will celebrate all day. If there are any vendors that would like to participate, please don't hesitate to call the office, 708-212-2240, or 708-891-8194. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman. Alderman Gardner?
Thank you, Mayor. I would just like to wish all of the mothers in the Fifth Ward and in the entire city, Happy Mother's Day, and I also solicit the prayers for my own mother, who's experiencing some health challenges. Solicite prayers from all of the churches and the members of the city. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman. Alderman Patton?
Thank you, Mayor. Echo everybody else, Happy Mother's Day to all the mothers in the Sixth Ward, as well as my wife, my mother-in-law, my mother, and my stepmother. And I'm just looking at this, Mayor, did we, did you want to make this appointment tonight?
I'm gonna do it after.
Okay, sorry. Then that concludes my report.
Unless you want to, you want to make the motion.
No, I didn't. I just wanted to make sure we didn't forget about it.
All right. Thank you, Alderman. Alderman Smith?
Yes, just want to say Happy Mother's Day to all of the Seventh Ward and citywide, all the mothers. Also want to congratulate my son Xavier. He is graduating from Northern Illinois University with his business degree on Saturday. And definitely, Alderman Williams and Wilson, you are in my prayers. Thank you.
Thank you. Tonight, I have two items. Just mentioned earlier, the summer youth program, so we want to encourage our residents to go to the website and apply. The applications are still being accepted, and encourage any alderman to submit, ask any youth to make sure they apply. We want to make this one of the best youth programs we've had. We have an extra $500,000 through the grant to hire, so let's make sure we hire our youth this summer. And also, coming up will be a lot of graduations, so we're going to ask the public to be cognizant of the many graduations that will be going on. Please, if you're having graduation parties, call our police department if you need assistance. We want to make sure our young people are safe this summer as they celebrate graduation, but we also want to make sure that they continue on with their education. At the next council meeting, I'll be announcing some scholarship programs that we're involved in with the state and other organizations. But again, parents, we know you want to be happy and for the graduates this year, but let's practice safety as well. Last item, I submitted to the City Council, a letter for appointment for Scott Nema, for Deputy Commissioner of Public Works, and for, I will submit a list of all of the other appointments to the City Council for carryovers later tonight or tomorrow, but can some, I'd like to entertain a motion to approve the appointment of Scott Nema as Deputy Commissioner.
So moved.
Motion made by Alderman Williams, is there a second? Second by Alderman Patton. Madam Clerk, can you please call a roll?
Navarrete?
Yes.
Wilson?
Yes.
Tillman?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Gardner?
Yes.
Patton?
Yes.
Well, thank you, everyone. That concludes our City Council business for tonight. We do not have executive session tonight, correct, to the attorney? So is there a motion to adjourn at 6:45 p.m.? Motion made by Alderman Patton, second by Alderman Gardner, all in favor?
Aye.
Meeting adjourned at 6:45 p.m. Thank you, everyone.